Hello everyone, it is your favorite host Amber Viola and welcome back to Politics But Make It Fashion. Today I have a special guest with me, Todd Posley, who is a Scranton resident and he's been here for a really long time. He's dedicated himself to improving the community as a director of community development at Neighborhood Works. And also working with North, South, Eastern PA. He's had a bunch of different roles. Boards for Habitat for Humanity, Leadership Lackawanna, Friends of the Poor. And he currently is a chair of the Scranton City Planning Commission and the Lackawanna County Land Bank Advisory. So he also holds a master's degree in public administration from my alma mater, Marywood University, and a nonprofit leadership certificate from the University of Scranton. So, welcome!
Thanks Amber, now I'm excited to be here and chat with you today.
Great, so first thing I want to do is kind of just talk to you about... I want to talk to you about you're running for city council, right? So, tell the people, what is a Scranton city council? What do they do? Who are these people?
Yeah, that's a great question. And many folks have that, right? So, you know, Scranton, in the city of Scranton, there's a five-member city council. They're all called, considered "at-large representatives." So, in some municipalities, there may be a council and you have individual council members that represent an area of that city or municipality. In Scranton's case, we don't represent specific areas of Scranton, we're all at-large. So we represent all residents in the city. So, the way I like to think of it is, you know, the mayor. If you think back to, you know, grade school civics lessons, you know, you have three branches of government. You know, in Scranton, your mayor is essentially the executive branch. She's the one working, he or she's the one working day-to-day to run the city. The city council is like the legislative branch. So, their primary responsibility is passing local legislation, so local rules and regulations. They also importantly are the ones that approve the city's budget every year. So, basically, any funding that the city spends in some way is authorized by city council. City council members, they meet once a week all year long, there's a few short recesses in there. They are part-time positions, so most city council members also have other full-time jobs. But, you know, they're in a great position to, you know, again, affect the way that the city operates, approve the budget and all money that the city spends on behalf of taxpayers. And also just help solve problems. So, city council members are often sort of the first elected officials that many Scranton residents will go to if they have a problem or an issue. You know, or they want to speak their minds. So, you know, I'm looking forward to having that opportunity to chat to people about what's important to them.
Great, no, I definitely, I love that. Um, you mentioned the council at-large. Do you feel like the way our city council system is set up, it represents actually Scranton as a whole? Because I love the at-large idea. Mostly because I feel like there's certain parts of Scranton, south side and west side, who get left out of the politics and frankly, everything. I'm a north Scranton resident, I live right off of Green Ridge, so I feel like I'm always represented, you know? Everybody represents me over here. But, um, but that's something that I haven't really heard anybody running for council kind of mention in the scheme of things, but just like your opinion on that.
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, I'm not sure to be honest, which is the better model? You know, at-large representation means, you know, anybody who wants to run for council, you know, kind of has an equal shot at it, right? So, but, you know, to your point, it could also mean that, you know, there are areas of the city that may not be represented by a council person that lives in that area, right? So, you know, for example, we've got a handful of people running for city council this year. Many of them, including myself, live in west Scranton, which is our largest neighborhood. You know, it's natural. But, you know, if we were to have more of the, you know, typically, you know, in other models, you'd break up, you know, your community into like districts or wards, neighborhoods. You know, then you'd have folks, you know, running for those particular ones. That could mean, you know, it's also much more competitive depending on which neighborhood you're in and it'd be difficult for you, you know, to earn a city council spot if there are a bunch of people running in west Scranton. So yeah, I'm not sure whether one model is better than the other. But, you know, I think the opportunity here, you know, the one thing I'm super interested in is making sure that, you know, we do represent everyone, you know, and that everybody, regardless of where you live, that you have a voice. And, you know, our neighborhoods in Scranton, you know, I think are one of our greatest assets. So, it's really important to me that I'm getting out, talking to people in every neighborhood, working through neighborhood associations and other groups, and, you know, taking government to the people.
Right, so why are you running for council? And I guess that could kind of go into, you know, why should people support you? Or, you know, for, I guess, two-sided question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that question. It's certainly crossed my mind before, so I was actually going back through some of my notes. It was 2017 when, you know, I first participated in, it was some sort of local, you know, workshop for people that, you know, were thinking about running for office, just kind of like talk you through the whole process, explain it to you. And I didn't end up running, you know, at that point, but it was kind of the first time that it ran through my head that, yeah, this might be something I'd want to do someday. So, you know, and I've considered it off and on since then. And, you know, this year, the election rolled around and I decided to throw my hat in the ring. And, you know, I think a big part of the reason I did was, you know, the encouragement that I got from other people. You know, people in the community, other leaders who I greatly respect, admire, folks who have served in public office, currently serve in public office, you know, just community leaders doing good work, who reached out to me and said, "Hey, you know, there's going to be a seat open, you know, there's three seats up this election and we know one council member's not running again and, you know, we think he'd be, you know, a great representative of the city." You mentioned, you know, in your great intro, you know, the work I've been doing. I've been involved in the housing and community development field, really ever since I came to Scranton to go to school at Marywood. And it's been a really rewarding and satisfying career, having an opportunity to work with residents all throughout Scranton, not to mention other communities in northeast Pennsylvania, to help improve their communities, their neighborhoods, their downtowns, their cities and towns. My, you know, as I look at what's, you know, kind of important to me, three things rise to the top. One is housing. Cities, city of Scranton's housing market has changed pretty drastically over the past few years. And a lot of that was spurred by the COVID pandemic. Where, you know, the city has long had, you know, a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing. You know, it was a relatively, it's always been a relatively affordable place to live. It's one of the reasons I stayed in Scranton and chose to buy a house here. That's been changing over the past few years. Home sale prices have been rising, rents have been rising. It's becoming more challenging for a lot of people to access safe, quality housing that they can afford. I want to make sure that, you know, as new families move into Scranton, as, you know, incomes rise for many people, which is a great thing, that those, you know, who are already here and living in the community and want to stay here, continue to have that opportunity. The second thing-
Housing is really a big issue and it is something that I hear a lot about, but I don't, I don't really hear a lot of our politicians actually talking. Our elected officials here, and it's, and it's the issue with buying a house and even just renting. I mean, for me, my rent has increased drastically since I was here. And I, once I graduated, got to Marywood and stuff, so that was like 2019, from then till now. And people's income hasn't rose since I've worked here. So, it's like before I was paying $900 a month, now I'm paying $1,200 a month. And my utilities have all increased as well. Everything else is the same. You know, so what do, what is, what are city council and elected officials going to do about those specific things right there? Because a lot of people aren't even at the place to buy a house. Like, that's not even, you know, that's not even the goal anymore. The goal sadly is to be able to afford to pay your rent all the time. And I've worked with other NEPA PAC, I just did a housing jubilee there and we had Bridget Kadraski and other people who were there talking about the housing issue. And it's, and, you know, people can't afford to live anywhere and the landlords here can just evict you for no reason. And they can just raise your rent over a text message or an email. They, "Hey Todd, your rent is now $400 more. If you don't like it, you will be evicted." And so like, what are, what are y'all going to do about those things?
Yeah, it's a great question. No, yeah, it's a complicated question, but it's a complicated issue. And I agree 100%, you know, I don't think it's something that is being talked about enough, you know, by city council. Not to say things aren't happening, you know, again, I've, you know, been privileged to work for, you know, a nonprofit organization that's partnered with the city for many, many years. And, you know, we're finding ways to help people, you know? There's a wonderful first-time homebuyer program, you know, that helps families purchase their first home in Scranton. You know, Neighborhood Works provides aging and place services to help seniors stay in their homes if they own their homes, but, you know, have trouble getting around, need a wheelchair ramp or need, you know, their clawfoot tub replaced with a walk-in shower. You know, we'll help them do that, right, so they can continue to live in their home and not have to move out. So, things are being done. But, what's drastically clear is that there is not enough quality affordable housing to meet current demands. And it's, you know, it's a challenge to provide that. Developing affordable housing is really, really expensive. Because a lot of the systems in place for nonprofit organizations to develop that housing, you know, create an environment where it's not cheap to create affordable housing. And you have to subsidize it, you know, at the end of the day. It's, you know, the reason more private for-profit developers aren't developing that type of housing because it's really difficult to do it and make a profit by doing it. But, that said, you know, there are definitely ways, you know, that you can do it, you know? Kind of a few that come to mind, I think, one, it's really, really important that we hold landlords accountable to maintaining their rental properties. You know, it's, uh, you know, as you described, you know, we've seen rents go up, you know, all across the city. And oftentimes, that's just because landlords know that they can raise the rents and get people to pay them.
Yeah, and especially here, it's this, you feel like you can't complain because there's no renter protection. So, if you, if I've seen, I've seen some housing here that makes me question so many things. And I know people's first thought, especially people who aren't in that kind of, I guess, economic situation or live in that type of housing or anything, will walk into places and your first thought is, "Well, why don't you tell your landlord that he doesn't work?" Because if I tell them that, I will be kicked out. So, you know, um, those are kind of the protections too that people in Scranton really need so that they can feel like they can, even if they have housing, you know, they can safely say, "Hey, I need this fixed." There's people who are living without heat for the winter time here in NEPA, which is crazy, but people were scared to say anything to their landlords, you know?
Yeah, a lot of that's education, right? You know, so for, if you're a tenant and you rent your home, you have legal rights, you know? And I don't think most tenants understand those rights. Not all landlords understand, you know, their rights or their obligations, you know, to their tenants. So, you know, I've had the opportunity to work with the Lackawanna County Housing Coalition, which is just a group of housing providers, both nonprofit, public housing providers, you know, that try to address a variety of housing issues. And, you know, one of those things that, you know, they've been trying to do is connect with landlords and connect with tenants. You know, and that's easier said than done, but I think, you know, education's really important. I would be interested in, you know, exploring legislation to control rents in some different ways. It is possible at the local level to, for example, control how much, you know, rents could be increased in any given year and things like that to make sure, you know, that it's, you know, we maintain affordability. The other really interesting, or I think really interesting opportunity here is to incentivize private developers to develop more housing that's affordable. So, a lot of the new apartments that you see coming online in the city, you know, you think about, you know, some of the downtown housing, you think about some of these adaptive reuse projects all around the city, things like, you know, Lace Village, which are just remarkable projects and gorgeous rental units and all the amenities that come with them. But, at the same time, they're really expensive, right?
They're beautiful though, I mean, I'm saying, I would love, I would love to move over there.
Right, right, yeah.
Realistically, I mean, you even have people who are working for the city of Scranton making, you know, $38,000, $40,000 to us city employees. They can't even afford to go there. I mean, there's people who can't afford to go to Marywood. You know, one of the things that I'm really passionate about this area is, I love this area. I think we have some amazing colleges. And it's sad that the annual amount of tuition for our colleges is more than people make here in a year. So like, local residents can't even, you know, there's, I know I have seen like Lackawanna, shout out to them. They do have a new program where they're letting people go to school and they're covering different tuition things for people who live here, which is amazing. And, uh, Marywood and the University of Scranton, y'all need to get on, especially you, University of Scranton, taxes. For them to be able to do that, but things like that. And incentivize people and, like you said, people like us will stay here and do things like that. But that's one of the things that's sad, you know, you have these great colleges and it's like, local people can't even afford to even go there, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to talk a little bit about that before I do, you know, just kind of wrapping up this idea about, you know, developing affordable housing. So, there's something called inclusionary zoning that I'm really interested in. And you mentioned at the beginning, I'm also currently the chair of the City Planning Commission. You know, so that's a discussion we've started to have, you know, there. But, there are things that you could do to either require or incentivize private developers, you know, say the developers of Lace Village, right? You know, who are developing dozens or hundreds of units of, you know, what you call market rate housing. But, but really, it's, you know, housing for higher-income families. To, you know, again, require or just incentivize them to also build in units that are affordable. So, they need requirements, you know, for, say, families that are at 80% area median income or below. Essentially, they would develop the exact same really high-quality, beautiful rental units, but some of them would be income-restricted for at least a period of time. And it can be, you know, again, you know, you can kind of take the carrot or the stick approach here. I prefer the carrots over the sticks. You know, you could require and just say, you know, for X number of market rate housing units that you develop in the city of Scranton, you're required to also develop X amount of affordable units. The other route is, you know, the carrot method here is providing incentives that would encourage people to do that, but not force them to do it. So, for example, you might waive fees, you know, certain permitting fees, if they incorporate affordable units. You might reduce the parking requirements that they have, which can be really costly for developers. So, that hasn't been done in the city yet, you know, and for that reason.
These are, these are great things and I think these are ideas even, and the thing about it is, what people want is even just the conversation. Just being able to bring it up and talk about it. And that's why I think having even economic diversity is so important. Because when you do have people from even just somewhere like west side versus somebody who lives in the hill section or in the plot or something, they're going, you're seeing different things and you're like, your brain is going, "Hey, these are things that I think we could talk about and bring up that other people just are not, they're not even thinking about." Even with the parking, you know, parking downtown, a lot of people in the city do not go downtown because they cannot afford it. And I remember bringing it up to city council and people were like, "What? What? Yeah, because y'all can afford to go down there and spend $10 to go to the post office. Everybody can, you know?"
Yeah, the, I don't want to give you an exact number here because I don't remember what it is, but I was surprised by just how many people, households in the city of Scranton don't own a vehicle. And I want to say it's close to like 20%. And again, I hate to throw a number out there, but, yeah, it's a surprisingly high number of families that don't even own a vehicle. So, you know, they don't even have, they don't have a choice, right? And, you know, I think most people would acknowledge and recognize that, you know, we don't have the kind of robust public transportation system in Scranton that-
I wouldn't robust?
I'm trying to be kind, but, you know, we have public transportation, right? You know, if you need to get around, you know, we have colts, right, and you can get a bus. But, you know, we know because, you know, just the ridership numbers and for other reasons, you know, it's not always convenient. It doesn't always get you exactly where you need to get. It may not be reliable for you. So, to your point, you know, what that means is that if you don't have a car and you don't have reliable public transportation, you know, you're left out and you can't make it downtown or you can't make it, you know, to the places that you need to be. That too is, you know, one of those thorny issues to solve. And, you know, not completely in the control of, you know, city council or the city, but, you know, definitely a challenge I'd be interested in trying to address.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, even, I don't, I hope this changed too, but when I was working at City Hall, I mean, if a lot of the people had to pay to park, most of the employees have to pay to park. If you weren't a director and had your own parking spot, you had to pay to park. Like, that's insane, you know? Whoever negotiated that contract with the parking people should have flew in, "Hey, if you work for the, you know, at least let our city employees, you know, park for free." But I think that's something that, you know, it seems like you would think of being down there or some of the other candidates would maybe think of that people who are on there right now wouldn't really, you know, wouldn't really cross their mind. And so, I really do, I really appreciate that. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to talk to you about it because I just, I think, I felt like you had good ideas to throw out there and even just to get these conversations, you know, started. I want to change gears a little bit and talk about political parties. So, you are running as a-
Democrat?
There we go. So, because there are some people who are running right now, who I feel like are trying to not tell their political party or like, I don't know, be weird about it. That's just, you know, I see your face, so I feel like you know where I'm coming from. But, um, I guess, you know, I want to, why should, why do you think it's important or not important for people who are running for things like city council or even school board or these local elections that we have coming up? Why do you feel like it is or isn't important to, you know, talk about your party affiliation or to have a party affiliation? I know we have the, the way our voting system goes, especially for our primaries. You got to vote within your primary thing, so I know that matters on that side, but what about, what do you think?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I'd start by saying that, you know, in general, and I think, you know, this applies to the city of Scranton, the more local your elected office gets, you know, the less, you know, perhaps ideology is important, right? So, at the federal level, you know, if you're the President of the United States, if you are, you know, a US senator or congress member, you know, you're making decisions that, you know, about things that, you know, Democrats or Republicans or members of any other party would have very different views about. As you get to a local level, you know, your mayor, your city council members, these people are making generally more practical decisions about your day-to-day life. They're making sure your streets are paved, they're making sure utilities work for you. You know, they're, you know, you know, again, approving budgets and expenditures and things like that. So, you know, it's, it's less often do kind of like partisan ideological issues come up. That said, it still is absolutely important, right? You know, to help you understand, you know, what your candidates, you know, believe in and support. We just talked a lot about housing, right? And, you know, that's something that, you know, depending on your party affiliation, you could have some very different, you know, views of that. So, it is important, you know, right now, we have, I'm one of six candidates, you know, that are running for a Democratic seat or a spot on the Democratic ballot. We have one city council candidate on the Republican side. And the reason for that frankly is that Scranton is a majority Democratic city and it's really difficult to get elected as a Republican. What that has also meant is that, you know, I think some candidates that may have run-
Would be on the other side.
As Republicans have made, you know, kind of a strategic decision to, you know, run on in the Democratic primary because they believe that's a better way to get elected. You know, again, I'd go back to my original point in that, you know, I think party is less important at, you know, the local level. But, you know, I think the thing that is more concerning to me, and you mentioned this, is, you know, the fact that, you know, you may have candidates that aren't being 100% honest, right? You know, and, you know, as a candidate, that's really important to me that I am sincere and I'm honest. And, you know, I'll answer your question and I'll tell you how I feel. And, you know, in some cases, that may not be, you know, the best strategic move, right? You know, or the thing that all voters are going to support. But, you know, I pride myself on my integrity, you know, both as a candidate and hopefully, if I have that opportunity to sit on city council. So, yeah, I'm, you know, and I don't throw people under the bus, you know, and I'm not saying people can't change their parties. You certainly can, you know? But, you know, I think to do it just for strategic reasons, to help you win an election, you know, is dishonest.
Yeah, and definitely, and to me, when I'm, when I'm doing research and I'm going through people's stuff and I can't find what party you're affiliated with, I find that just to be a little bit odd because it's, you know, if you're not affiliated, I wouldn't just say that. But if you are, then, you know, that's kind of my whole thing. But, um, last thing I want to talk about here is the conflict of interest issue. So, you went a little bit Scranton viral here with issues related to your candidacy and questions about conflicts of interest. Because as you said earlier, when we're talking about city council, city council is a part-time position. So, everybody on there has other jobs and people also sit on other boards. When you do that, you obviously have to turn in, you know, financial information to make sure everything's above board. You turn in a conflict of interest sheet to make sure that everything is above board, especially when we live in a place that's this small. You're gonna have conflict and when you have any elected position where people also have to have a job, it's hard because to me, you can't just say, "Hey, if you work-" Because to me, you can't just say, hey, if you work for this law firm, if you work for this news station, if you work here, you can't run for office. Because then that's not the system now we have, you know, so kind of like, did you feel a little called out? You know, how did you, how did you uh, feel about that, that situation? And kind of like, what do you think about the, the whole conflict of interest with the local politics?
Yeah, um, so yeah, it's this, uh, I'll, I'll be honest in saying this co- completely caught me by, by surprise. Um, and uh, you know, I've gotten a, a hard lesson, um, in, in politics and, and Scranton politics over, um, you know, the, the past few weeks. And um, you know, for me, you know, I look at my, my background in housing and community development at work, nonprofits, um, to be an asset. And something that, um, I believe uniquely qualifies me to hold a seat on city council. I know and, and have found ways to engage residents, um, you know, to uh, help them uh, create a vision for um, improving their community, their, their neighborhoods. Um, I've worked to uh, engage them and actually working together to im- improve their, their communities, right? I understand how it should be done, I understand how to secure the funding to, to make it happen. So, you know, these improvements that we're, we're talking about, um, you know, I understand how to, um, you know, the, the strategies and, and the ways to address some of these issues. Which I believe is, is a valuable asset for a member of city council. So it was really surprising to me, uh, but you know, for, um, you know, others to, to kinda take that and, and really try to spin it as a, a negative somehow. But you know, the, the work I'm doing for.
It was surprising to a lot of us.
Yeah, um, but you know, it's, it's not as surprising when you, you look at the why. I, I don't think anyone who's raising these concerns is really concerned about the conflict of interest, um, you know, but are. But are doing it to, um, you know, uh, you know, make uh, other candidates' chances of, of winning this election, um, better, right? You know, and ultimately.
And that's the way I saw it. That's how, but I mean, I don't know if that was their, their, um, purpose of putting it out. But when I looked at it, the first thing I thought was like, they don't act, they don't care about conflict of interest because everybody has them. You know, there's no way to kind of get around them. Why are you doing this?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and that's, that's, I think, the, the main point, right? Conflicts of interest exist, um, I'm, I, I wouldn't claim it's not a conflict of interest. If I sit on city council, I also continue, you know, my, my work at, at Neighbor Works and Neighbor Works receives funding from the city. That is absolutely a conflict of interest. But there are professional, ethical, time-tested ways to address that, that conflict of interest. And um, you know, it's as simple as recusing yourself from all discussions about any matters related to, you know, my organization, my employer. Um, and abstaining from votes on any of those, those issues. So, you know, when it time, comes time to, you know, uh, approve a, a grant application for Neighbor Works, for instance, that's something I would recuse myself from. To your point, anyone at any time, any candidate that's currently running, um, could have a conflict of interest, um, you know, whether it's with their employer or with uh, family members.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, pose a challenge and they'd have to go through this, this too. So um, you know, I'm, I'm continuing to run, I'm, I'm excited to, to continue to run. I, I hope to be able to, to do that and, you know, continue doing the work I, I do at Neighbor Works. There are ways to do it, it's been done before, um, you know, in this community and other communities. Um, and uh, you know, I, I hope people see, um, you know, be, these tactics for, uh, for what they are.
I, I think that they will, um, thank you so much for, for explaining that to me. Um, it actually like, seeing that really made me more interested in kind of what you were doing because I, I think, you know, they're raising a stink about you. There's a reason why they don't want you on there. And um, normally those reasons will, don't benefit us, you know, regular people out here, they'll, they'll benefit them. So please tell people where they can find out more information about you and also where can they uh, vote for you?
Yeah, absolutely, so um, you can find more information about me at toddforscranton.com. So I provide a little bit of information about my, my background, um, some of the priorities that I have. And we talked about housing, there's uh, you know, some other priorities on, on my website, um, you know, that are really important to me. Um, and uh, yeah, if you're interested, um, in uh, in volunteering, supporting my campaign in some different ways, um, you can find that information there. Most importantly, I wanna encourage everybody to get out and vote in the primary election. So May twentieth, primary election, um, uh, if you haven't, if you aren't registered to vote, um, just yet, um, there's still time to do that. I think May fifth is, is the deadline, um, you can vote in person, you can vote by mail. As you mentioned, the, the primary, um, because of our, um, our, our political system here in, in Pennsylvania, um, primaries, uh, you must be uh, registered uh, for, for the party that, um, you wanna vote for candidates. So um, you must be registered as a Democrat or a Republican to, to vote in, in the primary. Um, and uh, you're only able to vote uh, for your candidate. So I'm, I'm running as a Democrat, um, you know, if you're registered as a Democrat, um, you can vote for me or one of the other uh, five candidates that'll be on the ballot. But um, please, please, please get out, vote in the primary. Primaries, um, you know, uh, especially in uh, kind of uh, non-federal election years, um, you know, the, the turnout tends to be low. But um, you know, what I want everybody to remember, and I try to remind people is that, um, you know, your local elected officials, your city council members, your mayors, your school board members, these are the people that often have the greatest impact on your day-to-day life. So.
They do.
I know it's exciting to go out to the polls when, you know, you're voting for president of the United States, um, but uh, make sure you get out and, and vote for your local elected officials too.
Absolutely, um, thank you so much, um, I love local elections, I love local politics. Please make sure you guys get out and check your voter registration if you are registered. We know that last election Scranton was consolidating a lot of the um, election facilities. So make sure you know where to vote, make sure your address and everything is up to date. Please get out there, um, our last voter turnout was pretty low, I believe it was below twenty percent, I think, um, for, for our last election there. So make sure you guys do that and stay tuned for more politics, but make it fashion. I really hope to get a lot more people who are running for this local election and talk about them, talk about where they stand on issues and why they're running for these positions. And thank you so much, Todd, for joining me and we will chat soon.